Didn't mean to scare you, huh? Good evening and welcome to the Lee County Board of Education. I welcome y'all. We have a beautiful crowd here today. I'd like to call us to order and the first thing we have is a moment of silence, please. Now if you'll please all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next is the time we actually enjoy the most, most of the time, and that is our public comments. Your public comments are limited to three minutes and the board will not be responding to any complaints. We will hear you and we will address you in the right place to take those, but we would definitely love to hear from you all. I think the very first one we have on the list is Bill Carver, County Commissioner for Lee County and the Liaison for the school system.
Good evening. I'm Bill Carver, 104 Steelbridge Road, and I stand before you as a citizen of Lee County, not as a commissioner. I just want to stop just for a second and tell you how much I appreciate the work that you all have been doing. I've been involved with several of you, have the pleasure of exchanging some comments with you, and I know how hard you are working to prepare a budget for the school system. And I also understand how clearly your heart is dedicated to the students and the teachers and the administration in this county. So I applaud your effort and just hope that on more than one occasion, somebody says thank you to you. Thank you very much.
Next we have Vicki Wilkins.
Madam Chair, members of the board, people who were gathered this evening. I'm Vicki Wilkins, employee of the Lee County School System for 48 years and a proud member of the staff of Southern Lee High School. I come to you tonight to extend an invitation to you and to thank you for your help and for that which you do. I wanted to share with you that the young man that you all went to bat for to help us out with the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, Mr. Preston Clayton. He made it to regionals this past Friday and thank you so much, sir. And it was a proud moment. He went past the first round, went into the second round, and wouldn't you know, we'd have to compete with somebody from our biggest rival's school in the second round. But that's a good thing because Mr. Jacob Womble took that match. And I believe if I'm not mistaken that he is heading on to states this weekend, so that's a plus. So both young men, you know, from this area, but certainly the magic that you all pulled there was great and the family is ever grateful and so are Coach Fred and I. We do appreciate that so very much. Today is National Teacher Appreciation Day and I just want to tell you that I saw this saying today, and it says, "I've come to believe that a great teacher is a great artist and that teaching might even be the greatest of the arts since the medium is the human mind and the spirit." And that was written by Mr. John Steinbeck. And I'm sure I can speak for any educator who's in the room tonight. There's a lot of things that we do, but we cannot take all the credit for what takes place in a building, whether it's the elementary world, the middle school, the high school, charter school, wherever you may be. It takes a lot of people and it takes people like you and it takes other people in this room to be a part of this. So I just wanted to tell you that in terms of what we do, the ship is sailing and we all have to keep sailing with that ship. I gave you a little flyer tonight. We have something coming up at Southern Lee High School. It's called Cavaganza. We are going to celebrate our arts on May the 25th. And we would love for any and all of you that could make it to join us. It's a float through thing. Bring your cash money because we've got food trucks and other things like that. And wonderful entertainment. It is our students and staff as well. And we have a little bit of something for everybody that evening. So if you can join us, please do. And Ms. Womack, if I may, I understand there's a piece of artwork that you're interested in at Southern Lee High School. And I understand that we're working with the artist to see if that can happen for you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Next we have our vision statement.
Lee County Schools in partnership with the community will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovations, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Code of Ethics for School Board Members, Policy 2120. The board recognizes that collectively and individually, all members of the board must adhere to an accepted code of ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the board, avoid the solicitation and/or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the board, avoid the misuse of public funds, avoid misrepresentation or falsification of facts, and avoid making confidential information public. The board accepts the code of ethics established by the North Carolina School Boards Association.
So we have the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we have the approval of the minutes.
Same age.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we have our non-action reports and we are to recognize the runner-up for the NC CAT Empowerment Beginning Teacher of the Year. Patricia Colder?
Lady Madam Chair, Board Members. Tonight we have the honor of recognizing Kirby Forbes. As you know, she was our district beginning teacher of the year and went on to become the runner-up for the state. And we have some very special guests from NCAT that are here to actually award her her plaque with her name on it. So we're going to have Kirby come up and I'm going to let them come up and speak.
Hello and greetings from the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teaching. We provide professional development for North Carolina educators at our Cullowhee and Oakrecoat campuses in addition to online and school-based professional development. We're here with you this evening to celebrate a very special individual. Kirby Forbes is North Carolina's 2023 NCAT Beginning Teacher of the Year runner-up. At NCAT, we are proud to honor teachers and the teaching profession, and the celebration of great beginning teachers is something Dr. Brock Womble, our executive director, is passionate about. I'd now like to share some things that Ms. Forbes has written and that others have shared about her. It's been a minute. Ms. Forbes believes students learn best when they feel safe, included, and heard. Her students know they have someone who is rooting for them in all aspects of life, not just in math class. She wants her students to know they are loved, appreciated, supported, and capable. A parent shared that Ms. Forbes makes students feel safe, safe and loved. She celebrates victories and gives them the confidence to think they can maybe do this math thing after all. One of my favorite things about Kirby is that she decided to come home. A little over a decade ago, Kirby was a student at Lee County High School. She could have pursued any number of career paths, but she chose to follow her passion, teaching. Ms. Forbes is described as a rare talent who is respected for her tenacity, passion, resilience, and compassion. A student shared, "I knew she was going to be a strict teacher with high expectations, but I could already tell I was going to love her. When you walk into her room, you feel at home and safe. She always has good energy and sets a good example for us. She is the best teacher anyone could have. If I could stay in her class all day, every day, I would." We should all be so fortunate as to have a teacher like Kirby Forbes. We are proud to honor you this evening, Ms. Forbes. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
While they're taking a quick photo, I do want to recognize that some of her students came tonight. So if you are her students, wave. There we go.
Thank you. Next we have the Chairman's Report. And I can say I absolutely love going to the art events this weekend and yes, I did get attached to one of the local pieces. This is a statement that I'm making in reference to the internal investigation that the Board of Education recently had. As many of you know, Andrew Allen's arrest on November 2022 was related to alleged sexual abuse of students. The Lee County Board of Education authorized an external investigation into the matter and a review of the school system's policies, training, and safety plans to seek improvement that would help prevent something like that from ever happening again. For the past several months, our investigation has been conducted by an outside counsel and included extensive staff interviews and an in-depth review of documentation. The board is grateful for the methodical work of our external investigators. While much of the substance of the investigator's work cannot be made public because it is confidential or privileged nature, the board wants to share some of the key findings and recommendations from that investigation. In doing so, I need to clarify the scope of the investigation. While the review did not look back to the time of Andrew Allen's hiring and was very thorough, it was not a law enforcement investigation. Because of the ongoing criminal investigation, the review did not include interviews with Andrew Allen or any of his victims. We only have access to our own documents and may not have other information shared with the police from other sources, including private communication outside of our school system. First, the board wishes to make it very clear, the alleged predatory criminal behavior of Andrew Allen is horrific and reprehensible. Such behavior has no place in our school system or our community. Andrew Allen should be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law. The Lee County School Board has and will continue to cooperate and support our law enforcement and local district attorney on all aspects of this case. With respect to the employment practices of Lee County schools, the investigation found no evidence of our hiring practices were insufficient or that we missed any red flags in Mr. Allen's hiring process. Counsel found no evidence that any staff member had actual knowledge of Andrew Allen abusing any students. We found no complaints from students or parents regarding such abuse prior to November of 2022. During the investigation, we identified several additional measures the school system could reasonably implement to better safeguard our students from future misconduct by a staff member or teacher. We plan to conduct more detailed anti-grooming training for both staff and students. We will review the changes to board policies and school-level procedures to clarify boundaries that staff must adhere to and their interaction with students. Finally, we would clarify staff roles and improve our Title IX complaint and review process to create clear lines of communication for any future concerns, including clear public identification of the school system's Title IX coordinator. Because of the confidential nature of this information involved in this matter and because of the ongoing criminal investigation against Andrew Allen, the board will not be providing further comments on the matter at this time. Next we have the Clean School of the Month Award. That would be you, Dr. Waller.
Chair, Board Members, I'm very happy to present tonight this Clean School Award again this month to Floyd L. Knight. And Ms. Allen, the principal, called me this afternoon and she was very, very regretful for not being able to be here tonight to accept the award and to brag on her school and how clean and how caring it is for students. So she has a family member, her father, that had major surgery and she needed to be with him tonight. So on behalf of Ms. Allen and Floyd Knight, I very graciously accept the Clean School Award for her. Thank you.
Next we have the Financial Report. Ms. Jones?
Madam Chair, members of the board, you have before you the financials. As presented each month, you have the March financials as well as the COVID update, the COVID charts, as well as the Board of Ed expenditures.
Any questions for any of the board members? Any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, I wanted to discuss something that's not necessarily in this monthly report that we receive, but I guess just an issue that I was made aware of is the finance chair post the finance meeting that we recently had. So this issue is regarding state supplement funding and the correct usage of that funding, right? So I just want to, I want to start by saying that I'm pretty, I'm kind of frustrated about this issue, right? Because this is me finding out about a problem again about five or six weeks after the initial notification. We had a similar issue last month that I talked through. We talked through it at the committee level at the meeting. And it's just frustrating to me to have to go back and try to understand what happened and why I haven't been informed as the finance chair. So with that, Ms. Jones, if I may, I just want to kind of talk through the timeline and the communications surrounding this issue, just to make sure that everything's clear. So the first email that you received from DPI was received on March 22nd and it was basically a notification of a potential issue, right? So calculation of state funds being used in the appropriate manner. So there was a follow-up from DPI the following day, which was basically like answering several questions. So there was yourself and CFOs from other counties on that first email. So the second one the next day was basically just updating with questions asked. There was a question answered in there that noted that if it was found that there was an issue with the usage of that supplemental funding, that the state would, I guess by law, withhold that funding for the next fiscal year, right? So there was that notification on that day. So after the 23rd, it's been noted that there were several meetings between you and those other CFOs just to kind of commonize the preparation to report back to DPI to show that we indeed spent the money correctly, as intended. And then you prepared and sent an email to DPI on the 18th of April, which contained that information, right?
That is correct.
So after a Zoom meeting that took place on April the 20th, you notified the superintendent of this issue, so that was April 20th. The finance committee meeting in April was on the 27th, so a week after that, and there was no notification or discussion in that meeting. And then on May 1st, we received an email from the superintendent notifying us of this issue and it noted that our board attorney had been made aware of this from work in another county that he represents and just happened to see Lee County on that docket and reached out, made the communication that, you know, just to see if we needed help, I guess. I don't know that entire communication. I'm getting a nod. So basically on that same day when the attorney reached out to the superintendent is when the board was uninformed. So again, from March 23rd to May 1st. So that's kind of the timeline we have. And with that, assuming that was all correct, correct me if I'm wrong, I would just like to understand, so now kind of knowing the backstory, if you could just provide a brief update of where we're at with that situation?
It was on the agenda for the last week's State Board of Ed meeting. We did work in conjunction with Mr. Rawson as well as some other surrounding counties. We had talked with their legal counsel as well. They did feel that we were correct in using the funding the way that we did and they did ask for it to be removed from the State Board of Education agenda and it was done so so that they can do some additional work on that.
Well, real quickly, I do have the attorney coming up to discuss that later, but I think the question was more in reference to the timeline. When did you know? When did the superintendent know? When did the board know?
I provided the emails as I received.
The dates, so what dates were those?
So the initial communication from DPI was March 22nd. That was the very first, very first time they reached out. Ms. Jones notified the superintendent on April 20th.
Okay.
And then the board was notified May 1st.
Okay. That's all I need. And I think that's enough for Ms. Jones unless y'all have some other questions in reference to that.
I mean, I just wanted to say wrapping up, thank you for the update. So I do want to make sure that we discuss in the next finance committee meeting, just because again, I have to reiterate, so this is the second time that I feel like I've been kind of left out of the loop on things. So I'd really like for us to discuss what we need to do going forward, you know, at what point do we make these communications? And just kind of reiterate, so not looking to micromanage here, not looking to be copied on all the emails that would go back and forth, none of that. But just, you know, just to be informed that, hey, we've been put on, you know, notice by DPI that we might have an issue, finance department's working on it, we'll give you an update when we get one, you know, something, something like that. Because I think if we get to a point where there was an issue, I definitely, I can't be out of the loop and have to go back, right? So I just need to kind of know what's coming, so if we need to plan contingencies, just all those things. So I'd like to do that next time we have finance committee.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I have a question. Ms. Jones, how much money is involved in this issue, the difference?
It was $1.7 million.
$1.7 million. Thank you.
This should also be something I would like for the policy committee to take a look at. If it's something as simple as putting it in there that anytime we receive any type of a communication from DPI that's particularly going to a state level, then the board should be notified, if y'all could look into that. And I think that's it. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Now we're going to ask our attorney to come up and explain to us how he found out about this concern and what steps he's taken since then.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'll keep my remarks shorter as Mr. Rommel has already covered, I think, some of the content of this. But just to lay a little foundation for this, as part of the COVID relief dollars that have been put out through the state and nationally, our General Assembly in 2021 authorized an ongoing expenditure each year for the purpose of bolstering supplements for teachers and administrative staff, administrators, excuse me. And there's a formula in the statute, I won't go into the weeds here, but there's a formula. Each county or district gets a certain amount of money and they're told how much to put it to, you know, it's very directed in terms of how it's to be used. The key piece for this purpose is that you cannot use that money to save money you were already paying in supplements. The idea is it has to go on top of what you were already doing to supplement your teacher salaries and your administrator salaries. So if, let's say, just for example, Lee County was going to get $600 per teacher for this supplement, you can't say, oh, well, we were doing $2,000, let's knock that down to $1,400, use this $600 to keep it at $2,000, and then we'll save that money and spend it elsewhere. Can't do that, right? And so that is what DPI was looking at, was were these supplemental funds used on top of the supplemental funds you had already agreed to pay your staff? Or were they used to what they call supplant, right? Supplant the money and use it elsewhere. And a number of districts, I think it was 19 or 20 districts, were calculated to have potentially violated that issue. I was working on this for a couple of other districts and as I think was noted by Mr. Rommel, noted that it was on, that Lee County was on the list for the state board agenda that was coming up. I was already in conversation with the state board. I worked with Ms. Jones to figure out Lee County specifics as well. And in my view, Lee County hasn't done anything wrong, right? There was no supplanting here. There was not a reduction of your average salary supplement to teachers and staff. The funding appears to have been used properly. What happened was the way that DPI was calculating that was not in fact measuring what they were supposed to be measuring. And so I had some conversations with DPI, raised that concern, they went back and forth, and that agenda item was pulled from the state board agenda so that we could all sit down and make sure, because it's a lot of money, I think, as Mr. Davidson just noted, it's $1.7 million in future funding for Lee County. It's either larger or smaller, but on million in future funding for Lee County. It's either larger or smaller, but on that scope for other districts. So it's a lot of money. It's significant stakes, and we, you know, the State Board wants to make sure that they're doing it right. We want to make sure that they're doing it right. I cannot tell you how that ultimately is going to turn out. That they may come back and say, well, we've redone the formula, we've redone these things, and some of the districts that were on that list originally are still on the list. In my view, Lee County should not be one of them, but we will have to see how they do that. But I wanted to update the board, let you ask any questions, but know that I will continue to be in touch with them to make sure that the way that they're measuring that is in fact the intent of the statute as written, and reflects that Lee County, as we have determined it, has used those funds properly and should not be subject to any penalty moving forward. And just to be clear legally, it's not a repayment, right? There's no, there's no recoupment by the state. Lee County won't owe any money that it's already paid out. The issue is potential eligibility for future funds.
And just to clarify, you found this because you were working on this case for a couple other schools, am I correct? Out of the 20 schools that?
Yes.
So it's a fair question. So you're working on ours now because you happen to see it in passing during the others. So that gives you a total of three schools that you'll be defending on this?
I think defending is too strong a term. I have become the point person at our firm for this. A number of districts on that list are represented by our firm, even if I don't work with them directly. But in order to be efficient, those all get to my desk, and we speak on behalf of all of those districts in that conversation with DPI. There's no reason to send seven separate letters or emails when we can say it's the same issue across the board. So yes, I am the point person at this point for a number of districts that are making sure that this is addressed properly. And if they have to, if they're subject to the penalty, they're subject to the penalty once it's done right, but we want to make sure that it's done right. And we don't believe that any of them frankly will be subject to that, and I include Lee County in that.
Okay. Well, considering we're talking about efficiency, I would also like to talk about conservatism as well. If you're paying for three people, you're doing the exact same four. Are we paying one-third of that, or are we having to pay the full price?
So my time would be split, and obviously, Lee County only becomes part of that once I knew that Lee County was on the list, right? What I was doing before then does not get billed to Lee County.
It's a fair question.
It's a very fair question. But yes, when we do multi-county beneficial work, that gets divided evenly among those. So you know, I do bond forfeiture work. If I'm doing something that crosses boundaries for the six or seven or eight districts that we work on, that I work with on, bond forfeitures, that bill gets split evenly. We don't double bill, right? If I spend half an hour on it, it's not a half an hour each. It'll be five minutes each, right?
So I have to ask?
No, please.
Is there any more questions?
Always try to be transparent about that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
For Mr. Rawson. So it appears 21 out of 115 school LEAs were not in compliance.
So what I would say there is, at this point, zero are not in compliance, because that list of 21 was based on a calculation that was not measuring what the statute expects to be checked. That doesn't mean there won't be districts on that list when we get back to the actual language of the statute. But those 21, I would not say that them being on that list says yea or nay, unless I've looked at them. And in this case, I think Lee County should not be on that list, period.
But a lot of LEAs got it right.
Again, I don't know, because if you go and use the actual formula to look at what, whether there was supplanting or not, some of the ones that weren't on that list may end up on the list next time. So I can't say that the other 94 did it right. They just didn't get caught in the calculation, which we determined was not what the statute said should be measured. So we just don't know.
Initially, initially, that's what has been reported down from DPI. Here's, I want some, would like some clarification on this, because this was from a response from the CFO at NCDPI. And the question was that she was responding to, is there a remedy to pay the deficit? And the recommendation that LEAs are permitted to have a remedy option, either to pay the state the deficit, or to have the amount reduced from the next year allotment. It sounded like you were saying something a little different than that.
So to be clear, that is, that was the DPI chief's email, right? Not my words.
Correct, correct. I'm reading the email that she sent out in response to CFO's questions about what happened.
That's correct. Yes. And so if a district is found not to be in compliance, the statute speaks of them not being eligible for the funding the following year. There is an opportunity to cure the issue, namely by moving money that should have been, if there was supplanting, to unsupplant, if you will, fix the issue, and then the penalty could be either reduced or eliminated. So that is available, and certainly if a district is found not in compliance, it is my understanding DPI will work with them to try to cure the issue at lower expense than just being denied the funding entirely. But I can't speak for DPI on that.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Next, we have the committee reports. We'll start with Curriculum and Instruction.
Madam Chair, the Curriculum and Instruction Committee has not met since our last meeting. We were scheduled to meet tomorrow, but that meeting has been canceled, and there are no upcoming dates scheduled for our next meeting.
All right, we have Facilities and Technology.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Facilities and Technology Committee met on April the 25th. We discussed a long list of consent agenda items, which I'll mention real quick. Copier printer bids, metal detector purchase, leasing your tennis court maintenance, vape detector bids, train control upgrade bids, security camera upgrade bids, lottery fund request application. And Mr. Ladati has graciously agreed to run through a quick briefing of those before we do consent agenda.
Jamie?
Sorry, let me pull my notes up real quick. And I think some of the numbers changed. So I'll start with the metal detectors purchase, number five on the consent agenda. All of these were unanimously approved by the FNT Committee and the Finance Committee to be put on the consent agenda. We considered a proposal to purchase six metal detectors, three for each of the high schools. These will permanently replace the six metal detectors that are currently in place that were renting from the vendor. It was unanimous opinion to approve this purchase. We sent it to the Finance Committee. Six metal detectors were originally requested because that was a realistic number that could be ordered and received before the beginning of the school year in August due to supply chain issues. At the Finance Committee, the vendor made the superintendent aware that there were two additional metal detectors that could be purchased. So we updated our request to bring it to a total of eight, four for each high school. They're the same metal detectors, again, that we've, we've been in use. They're extremely accurate, that we found so far. The primary use will be for visitors and students that enter the high school during hours, but they're also mobile and could be used for large events, could be set up in other locations. The total for eight metal detectors was $158,757.39. The next was the security camera upgrade. FNT Committee and Finance Committee, again, unanimously approved a bid for $93,772.56 to upgrade camera systems at eight schools. This will include new web servers, as well as additional and upgraded cameras. The funding source will be lottery funds. Next, we have vape detector bids, item number seven. Bids were submitted for vape detectors for the middle schools and high school bathrooms. These detector bids ranged from $69,035 to $93,518 on the initial price, and then some of the systems had an annual cost up to $14,562. Both committees, again, unanimously recommended the least expensive option, which was Soder Technologies, at an initial cost of $74,124.25, and $0 annual cost after that recurring. It's waived permanently. The funding source was lottery funds. I will mention, since the, since those bids, one of the vendors has contested the accuracy of the bid. We've run that by our lawyer. Everything seems to be on the up and up, as far as we're concerned. It seems like maybe there's some competition amongst vendors. But that was the vape detector bids. Number nine is the Lee County High School tennis court ceiling bid. An additional $22,460 is needed to fix existing cracks in the tennis courts before they're resurfaced. We had already approved resurfacing the courts, but once, I believe, an inspection was done, they decided that there were cracks, and it wouldn't make sense to resurface over a substrate that wasn't stable. So this will fix those cracks and then allow the courts to be resurfaced. The work will be done by Sport Court, which is the same vendor that's doing the resurface, resurfacing, and the funding source will be the in-house construction budget for 2023-24. And then the train control upgrade bid, number 10. There are several train control units, which are HVAC units that are out of support and need to be replaced. Bids range from $203,815 to $266,800. Both committees unanimously recommended the bid from Brady at $203,814.67. Funding source is Esser. And the last bid is the printer copier bid, number 11. Our current copier contract ends June 30th, 2023. RFP went out on February 1st, and the district received several bids. It was the unanimous recommendation, again, by both committees to accept the Toshiba bid, which was option two, was the most cost-effective bid, and will be $9,721.94 per month, and a three-year contract with two one-year optional extensions. Toshiba copier has been used in the past, and references were checked. They're currently in use in Union County, Stanley County, Randolph County, Johnson County. All of those counties had positive things to say. There was some wording that needs to be updated on that, so if this is approved, it'll be approved contingent on getting the wording of that contracting correct through legal. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. The last thing, Madam Chair, for FNT is the Committee is continuing to work on capacity planning. So we did have another meeting with Don Kavaskits last month to just talk through the enrollment projection, and that work, again, will continue, and appropriate information will be brought before the board for full consideration. The next FNT Committee meeting will be held on May the 18th at 4:30 PM in the Heinz Education Building.
We have Finance.
So thank you once again. So the Finance Committee met on April the 27th. We discussed that same list of consent agenda items that Mr. Ladati presented. The Committee also unanimously approved the budget amendment to support the Evergreen Solutions education programs portion of the performance audit. So that additional budget amount was approved at the previous board meeting, so this is the amendment to support that. So in the amount of $25,000, that is listed on the consent agenda for review. The Committee reviewed the 2023-24 budget presentation that is on the agenda for tonight and will be reviewed by the full board. The Committee also reviewed the monthly classroom coverage report, board attorney invoice, board expense report, and financial reports, and those are all available on the FYI packet for review. That's all I've got. So the next Finance Committee meeting is scheduled for May 30th at 5:00 PM in the Heinz Education Building.
Next, we have Policy. Mr. Gaster?
Madam Chair, we had a meeting on April the 18th, and just a few policies was on that, with some for first reading, some for second reading. There was some language, excuse me, there was some language in Policy 6402 and 8702, under historically underutilized businesses. That was a recommendation by NCSBA, and Mr. Allen brought it to my attention that in the, in our packets that we picked up, that maybe everyone did not receive the strike-throughs on that information. And so just to clarify that, that the Policy Committee, myself, and Mrs. Bowen, it was unanimous to strike that language that was recommended, and basically just update the, what is called, the language now says historically underutilized businesses, and in the old policy, it didn't, it didn't say that, it said something else. So we basically just updated that wording. And then we had some other updates on staff and student relations, and then insurance for student transportation services. It was a very short meeting on that. So probably the shortest one I've had since I've been on the board. But anyway, so our next Policy meeting will be May 16th at 5:00 PM at the Heinz Education Building, in the basement.
And a reminder to the board, the policies that just came forward were for first reading, so you have plenty of time to review them and go over those if you have any concerns before our next scheduled meeting.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, and Chris and I had talked about it, the clean copy of that policy, if you click on the link for the Policy Committee minutes, the clean copy is there. If you click on the one where it has the first reading, it's not there. So if you want to verify and clarify that, it is, it's there, it's just not where it, it's not where you would have thought to click.
We can get that taken care of, I'm certain. Okay, next, we have going over the, our action items. The first thing we have, of course, is the approval of the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda as listed, with the Toshiba contract approval being subject to final revisions of terms and conditions by the attorney.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Make sure Susan gets that right up when we leave. Okay, next, we are moving on to, we have no unfinished business. So our new business, which is now, once again, it's you, Allen, and what he's going to be presenting to us is what we are going to be taking to the county commissioners, what we're going to request from them.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm going to try to do a slightly abbreviated version of this, just because I think those of us on this board are more familiar with some of this information. But at any point, if somebody needs to stop me and ask for clarification or anything you'd like to see changed, let me know, because essentially, this is a presentation that will be approved and then presented before the county commissioner. So with that, we can go to the first slide, which is, so this is just the agenda. So we're going to talk through the school system funding breakdown, local funding breakdown, the 2023-24 budget request, the capital budget request in detail, local supplement review, bus drivers, attendance bonus review, and then board action for performance. Next slide, please. So this first one is really just informational for the commissioners. So this is just a breakdown on the left of the school district total funding, so state, federal, local, just to kind of show how much comes from each source. And then on the right is just a total spend by the buckets that you see there on that ring chart. So again, kind of just, just for information on this one. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So this is a bit, a bit more of a breakdown of the local portion of that budget. So this just kind of gives like the previous ring chart that had the buckets and where all the money goes. This is specific to local budget. So again, I would call this one more of an FYI for the commissioners, just to help them understand where that local money is spent. Next slide, please. All right, so this is the actual 2023-24 budget request. So there's a lot of kind of small charts on here for detail. The highlight here is that our, our total, so CE is current expense budget, it is a 14% increase over the 2022-23 budget. Now, the base budget itself remains flat. And when I say base budget, so if you look at the table on the bottom left, that would represent like the general fund. So that's staying the same. And the things that we're asking for that contribute to that 14% increase are a one-time supplement boost for local inflation, and then the bus driver attendance bonus for route filling adjustment. And I will talk in more detail about those two things in the coming slides. If you could go to the next slide, please. So this one is for the capital request. So there are, on the right-hand side of the slide is the total list of all the items that was provided to us that are in this request. So generally speaking, this is routine maintenance for things. There's some security upgrades, some field facility upgrades and repairs. And then at the very bottom, on the right-hand side list, there is that special allocation request in the amount of $600,000 for demolition of the old Jonesboro School. So I did note on this slide that there was that recent fire at that facility, that I don't know the extent of that damage, but I assume that that quote for demolition is likely going to change some based on how that turns out. But at this point, that request maintains at $600,000. And then I also just noted that the future site use is still to be determined. So there's been been several things put out there, but first step is to get rid of that old building. So if you could go to the next slide. So this one, I'm not going to read through all these, this is just additional information on some of those capital requests. So this is basically the why for some of those things. So this is the wordy part, if you could go kind of slowly through the next few slides. So this is the Stanley Middle Gym floor that's been requested. So I am not a hardwood floor expert, but you can kind of tell there's some things going on that needs to be resurfaced. This is one of the Southernly hot water heater setup that is on that list to replace. So these are Wesley scoreboards, they've seen better days, some of these bleachers, kind of same story. Soccer fields at East and West, the soccer goals and football uprights. Okay, so this is where we get into the meat of the additional money request. So first, I would like to talk through the impacts of the state action that has been thrown around. So I think what we have here at the state level for 2023-24, if I'm not mistaken, this is Governor Cooper's proposal, was a 12% certified salary increase and an 8% classified increase, and I believe this would be over a period of two years. There has also been another, I don't know if it's the House, I think, that put out a potential thing, it's a bit different from this, but it includes a substantial increase, which is the point. So this one noted from Governor Cooper, the impact to Lee County would be about a half a million dollars increase in our portion of the supplement based on salary increase from the state, right? So there's kind of an unknown there. We do have that factored into the current budget, so we would, if the state provides that large increase, we are not going to have to come back to the commissioners and ask them for that additional funding. We do have the ability to cover that. And then I also noted that we were working on a plan to potentially switch from the supplement structure we have today, which is purely percentage of base salary. So we want to look at potentially switching to a fixed rate system, which Harnett County uses, which is at the bottom right, or potentially a percent plus a fixed rate, which Chatham County Schools uses, so that would be top right. And basically, so we don't have anything firm here. We wanted to start on this, the supplement restructure, and kind of hope to provide that this year, but we want to make sure that we cross all the Ts and dot the Is, because we don't want to get into a situation where we are dropping somebody's pay or causing any inadvertent issues. So basically, just want to, and I guess highlights to potentially changing that, the things that we're looking at are more predictable budgeting. So when you're paying a fixed sum versus a percent, it's a bit easier on the budgeting side to know what we're getting into, and you're not subject to state changes as well. I think there may be some opportunity to target tiers for that new supplement structure to provide some additional employee retention. And then again, we just want to make sure that we get this proposal done right, so we are not going to have that proposal this year. So if you go to the next slide, please. So again, on the supplement, so this is just teacher pay analysis. So the chair noted at our last meeting that in our peer group of other school systems that are being looked at in our performance audit, Lee County actually has the lowest median teacher pay within that peer group. So this is just basically an acknowledgement that there are several factors that contribute to that. So obviously, average seniority, since state pay schedule is 100% by years of service, factors into that, the degree level and certifications of the teachers, and then obviously also local supplement. So the highlight to this slide is that the performance audit is going to evaluate that teacher pay in more detail and provide us those things to consider for next year. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So this one, I'm calling the burning platform, because we're asking for more money. So why? So beginning teacher pay is approximately, we'll call it $28,000 annually, and that's net pay, so after taxes, after, you know, health insurance, things like that. So right there, around the $28,000 mark. A quick breakdown, so we did a breakdown of teacher experience in our school system, so you can see that in that chart on the right. We have approximately 31% in that zero to five years, so at the very bottom of that pay scale. Looking at local rent prices, a one-bedroom apartment would cost you anywhere from 800 to 1,250 a month at the current rates, and that is up, it's at least 100 bucks from last year. So I had a hard time putting a concrete number on that, so I know people that live in some of the local apartments, and that was one of the lowest numbers I heard for increases over the last year. So when you look at that, if we have a brand-new teacher that has to get an apartment and it's $1,000 a month, that is 43% of their annual take-home pay for a first-year teacher, and anybody that does a home budget knows that's way too much, that doesn't work. Also wanted to highlight here that there was a local property tax increase, approximately 45% was the average increase. So there's definitely, you know, a significant revenue increase to county government that would, you know, be able to support this request that we are providing. I also have in my notes just to highlight that, you know, the request for this budget increase, it's not really affected by our surrounding counties, right? I know in the past, we've looked at, you know, how much are our neighbors paying versus cost of living and things like that. This has nothing to do with that, because this is talking about local inflation specifically to Lee County. So this next slide on the supplement request, so this is actually getting into the financials of that. So the proposal is to maintain the existing supplement structure and add $1,200 per classified and certified employee excluding our senior staff. So the table on the right shows the approximate number of employees that we have at any given time on average. And again, this would be $1,200 would be the full-year amount, so I think the idea is to do this is $100 per month to kind of line up with that local rent increase, is the thought. So Ms. Jones has provided the numbers there for the estimated bonus, and then the social security costs and retirement benefits costs associated. So came to a grand total of approximately $2.1 million for that local budget increase. And I want to highlight, this is not a request for a permanent increase, this is a one-year, I'm going to call it a supplement bridge. And the reason I'm calling it a bridge is because it's going to give us a year to work on a permanent, permanent supplement schedule that takes into account anything that happens at the state level this year, so we get that uncertainty out of the way, we know what to expect coming up. And we also get to review that, the performance audit that we have. So we'll have plenty of information about teacher pay versus our peer group to be able to fully understand that and work that into a permanent request. Any issues with that one?
I just want to make sure that we continue to look at not just the peer group as identified by ADM and so forth, but still keep in your mindset that that may be the peer group, but it's still not who we compete with. That's not, I mean, our teachers aren't going to have the option to drive to Stanley County to work, that would be exorbitant, but they certainly could drive to Chatham County, they could drive to Moore County, they could drive to Wake County. And I think that while this is certainly an idea worth looking at, the fact that it has to be approved tonight and we haven't really had an opportunity to discuss it, I definitely am for waiting a year before we do anything to completely overhaul the system. I think, like I said, we need to look at our neighbors, because we already admitted that we are low-paid on the teacher's scale and that we have a high number of beginning teachers. I think that there's something to be said for, as teachers get more experience, they also get more money, that gives them the wherewithal to travel out of county to make more money, if that makes sense. A beginning teacher unfortunately doesn't make enough to justify the drive. Once you get five, 10 years under your belt, suddenly that's not such a big jump. If you can make 16, 18% on top of your salary by driving a half an hour, then it's more feasible. So I think we do need to look at the fact that we need to encourage longevity, we need to encourage good teachers to stay, and any flat rate that further kind of causes that benefit only to beginning teachers and short sheets, our experienced teachers may have that unintended consequence that you're trying to avoid. So I think there's a lot more discussion that needs to be had.
Yeah, definitely agree with that. And again, as you pointed out, that, you know, so this is giving us a year to talk through that, and the intent's definitely not to wait until next budget season to iron this out. We would like to have that work ongoing.
So tonight, what you're asking us to vote on, of course, you know, the slides would have to be updated as well, but are you asking, is Sandra trying to suggest that we not put this into, because it's May 15th?
Right, right now, it's set up in lieu of the 2%, I'm sorry, supplement adjustment that was requested by the superintendent. We're now saying, we're not asking for the 2%, rather, we're asking for this $1,200 per person bridge. I'm not opposed for that this year, I'm saying that it may be a bridge to a different destination in a year.
Madam Chair, if I may. First, I wanted to recognize and thank Mr. Rommel for his work on this proposal, and also thank you for allowing me to provide feedback. I was a little bit frustrated at the last meeting, probably because I went through, this is my first time going through the budget process, so I appreciate that opportunity. I also appreciate the increase from $600 to $1,200, and I recognize that there's a need for compromise in this process. So I just wanted to say thank you for all of those things. The statement was made that we are working towards a fixed rate. I'll go on the record as saying I'm not in favor of a fixed rate. I don't think there's a successful implementation of it. The one county that does have a fixed rate supplement, I believe, is a low-performing school district, so I don't, I don't have any, I mean, I'm open to the combination that Chatham does, but I don't see any need to explore that option unless there's some example out there of a successful implementation of it. I also had a question on the bus drivers, because I think, and I could be wrong, so correct me, please, but probably don't have to tell you that, but if bus drivers are classified staff, which I think they are, they would get a $1,200 supplement and the opportunity to have $200 a month, which would add up to close to $3,000 for our 100 bus drivers, plus or minus. I'm not, I'm not discounting the role that our bus drivers play, but that, it might be better to spend that money elsewhere, the $1,200 supplement increase at least. I think it could be put towards mental health. We, I believe, are going to have some new positions that we're going to have to staff and fill. We're going to be competing with neighbors, and I think there's some items that we can do to hopefully fill those positions and therefore maybe relieve some of the extra duties that teachers have to do now, that we should be, in my opinion, actively trying to clear off their plate. But I do appreciate, again, the opportunity to provide feedback on all this. Thank you.
Okay, I think we can move on to the next slide. And also, Jamie, so we may have some additional discussion, Madam Chair, on this one. So I'll run through this slide first, and then we can talk about if we want to keep this or not. So Jamie alluded to the bus driver attendance bonus. So again, according to this slide here, so current state for this bonus is $2 a day, which adds up to the possibility of receiving $40 per month. So, and I just noted that unfilled bus routes fall on our assistant principals to manage daily, so that's current state of things. The future state in the, what we have currently in our budget request is to increase that attendance bonus to $10 a day, which would provide up to $200 per month. And if I'm not mistaken, this bonus is paid, is weekly, is that right? Not, it's monthly? So a person has to complete every route for the whole month? Okay. So if a bus driver completes all their routes for the whole month, they receive its average, well, I guess it's $10 per day is what it would be, but it would be a total of, so 200 for the month, so 200 is zero, right? Okay. So the goal of this, as we talked about this increase, was basically just increasing those route fill rates. So I don't remember the number right off the top of my head, but it's something like maybe 50 or 60% of the current TAs are active bus drivers, for various reasons, medical reasons, different things. So the hope is that by providing a larger incentive, that maybe some people might come off the bench and decide to go ahead and be bus drivers for us. I don't know, I don't know how many we might expect to see that happen with. But basically, I mean, to me, there's an acknowledgement here of, you know, just that driving a bus in general, you've got, I don't even know how many kids fit on a bus, 70 kids on the bus or something like that, that's a big responsibility in providing this additional pay to our bus drivers. And again, I mean, it's, this is for an attendance bonus, so it's not a flat rate, not every single bus driver would get this. It just seems like a good idea. So then, I guess, the additional information that I've added here, on the right-hand side, the line chart just shows the percentage of our bus drivers that receive that bonus in each month of this school year, so you can kind of see it taper off. And really, to me, the point of, the point of showing this is, I did ask the superintendent if this increase is approved, we want to monitor this rate so we can provide feedback on any effect that this monetary incentive would have on that rate of drivers completing every route for the month. So I know with that, I've got one more slide, but I don't know if we want to have discussion on the bus driver thing. I mean, I feel like Jamie made a valid point, I don't know if we need to talk through that, because now is the night to decide if we do or don't want to have this. So I think Jamie's point that you made was that with the supplement increase, now, this is all contingent upon this being approved by the commissioners, so I'll keep it at that. But if everything's approved, these classified employees would receive that $1,200 annual increase, $100 a month, and then potentially receive this bus driver supplement as well. So in months where they do that, it would represent a $300 per month increase.
And to be clear, I'm talking about pure bus drivers, not instructional assistants/bus drivers.
And what number of pure bus drivers do we have?
So I don't think we have any that are...
That are not cafeteria workers, that are not teachers assistants, that are not jumping on that bus when they need it?
Yeah, two.
She said two.
Two.
Mm-hmm.
That affects two people, am I correct? I'm just, I'm just making sure, I'm not trying to be funny, I'm just...
Then, never mind.
Okay.
Oh, that number was larger.
Okay.
All right, so we can move on to the last slide. So this one is, again, information for the commissioners. So the idea of this slide, so I'm aware that in the past, the county commissioners have expressed some hesitation in providing local supplement increase due to failure to show measurable improvement in achievement and growth. So this slide is essentially a rundown of what the current board has, some things that we've already done, some things that we have in progress to push towards that goal of improvement. So I made this statement that's in bold, and again, this is something that I want to make sure that everybody on the board does agree with, and I will read that for you. So the board recognizes that a pay increase isn't a singular solution to teacher or employee retention. The board further recognizes that Lee County taxpayers can't be reasonably expected to fill a pay gap created by state inaction. So below is a list of actions taken and/or planned since December of 2022 to drive toward improvement. So then the list that I've got up here, I mentioned the calendar that we updated, so I think everybody here recognizes the benefits of that. Upper management oversight, so we do have a new superintendent evaluation tool that ties directly back to our vision statement as a school system, and created, you know, performance metrics that'll be measurable, as well as goals that can be cascaded to the superintendent's direct reports, just to ensure alignment all the way down through the management structure. The updated monthly financial summary to the board, so that one is still in process, that one's on my list of things to work with Ms. Jones on, but basically just to help provide enhanced financial oversight by the board. We've updated policies for parents' rights to hopefully get parents more engaged in... We've updated policies for parents' rights to hopefully get parents more engaged in the school system, which I think everybody would agree that engaged parents will help lead to better students. So non-monetary change, changes to bring in teachers, so this is just something that I'd like to see as part of our, perhaps in that new evaluation tool as a goal, but to provide training to, you know, our principals and our central office staff to talk about work-life morale enhancement. So I've had a bit of training in that in the industrial side. I realize it's not the same thing as a school system, but there are things that can be done outside of more money that make, make our school system a better place to work. And then the last one is the performance audit, and I just note that that report is due in June, and I listed the specific areas that that performance audit will be looking at. So again, this is a list of things to provide to the commissioners to just show them that we are working towards driving improvement by implementing some of these things.
Now, Mr. Rommel, just have a question for you. How simple would it be if, as the board, instead of all the writing, walk in, tell the county commissioners, because that's what we're doing, planning on how we're going to present it to them. And for me, as a associate of Lee County, I'd say, county commissioners, I clearly understand that you may not think that you're getting your money's worth. You may look at the last 10 years of our school system failing, but sirs, I would like for you to know, and ma'am, that we are doing, these are the following steps we are taking to ensure that Lee County schools will be the best in the state. These are the steps we are already taking, and this is, this is our plan. We have not had a district plan in 10 years. I promise you, we are working on that. You will not only have a district plan, you will have a strategic plan with benchmarkers, and you will be able to see that on a monthly or quarterly basis. Instead of coming out here and giving out clean school of year month awards, which is not, nothing wrong with that, we should be celebrating our teachers, like this one sitting right there, and she knows just how awesome she is. We should, we should be able to present to them, these are the things that we are going to do as a board, because we promise that you will have more bang for your buck in the years to come ahead. That's what I want that last slide to say. And when you do present it, there should be no, I don't know, or have to look into it. I want you to be extremely sure of yourself, and I want each member that's going to be presenting the slides, we can make them even smaller where you can see them, no offense, but county commissioners can't see that well, so you need to blow this stuff up a little bit. A few more pictures would be imperative. I looked at some of the things that we have there, the asphalt that's out there, and I'm sure he can help you out there, but give them the visuals of what we have. But at the very end of that statement, you can talk about all the things that we've accomplished in, you know, the last six months or whatever, but the reality is, we've only just begun, and that performance audit will definitely help us. You think we could work on that last part together?
Yep.
All right. Does anybody else have any feedback?
There's just one typo in that bolded area, if you get the word be on there twice. Taxpayers can't be responsibly be.
And that would probably be bullet statements, a lot of these things you might want to put into the comments in the bottom of the slides, so they don't have to read all that stuff. Does that make sense? In the military, they used to call that death by PowerPoint. We don't want to kill them, we just want the money. Okay? All right.
I just got on the capital request budget, the 1.3 million. I just got a couple of questions, like the scoreboards. I went out to the schools and looked, took pictures and looked at the goalposts and all that stuff. So the pictures that you seen all have a representative company on those scoreboards. And so they're asking to replace the scoreboards at those two fields. My question is, is that, there they are right there. So you see, you've got static control, Sanford grading, Coca-Cola. So my question is this, is that, I know this, that they will supplement to be able to put their advertisement on these scoreboards, and most companies will pay for the cost of the scoreboards. So has any marketing been done to the local corporations and companies to say, hey, our schools really need some new scoreboards? Could you donate some money to help supplement the cost of the scoreboards? This is what it costs. Has any of that, has any of that been done? Because if we're going to foot the bill for new scoreboards, then it don't need to have any of those on there at all, because that's free advertisement to a company or corporation that has not put a dime in it.
We got the ma'am with all the answers. Please come up here, because he knows what's going on.
Madam Chair, I think what happens, and that might be what Mr. McNeil's going to talk about, but schools use that money in their athletic department. They sell those ads on the scoreboards and around the school, and that's money that comes back for athletics.
Yeah, you're at the same point. So when these school, um, scoreboards was purchased, they did, like Coca-Cola, because it was local here, they purchased them for the schools. So the bids that I'm going to be getting for them is actually just for the scoreboard, but it comes with a panel that the schools can go out and says Coca-Cola, Pepsi, whoever a vendor, if they want to put their sign and name on the sign, then that goes back into the sports for that each location.
Okay, so with that being said, all right, so the cost of the scoreboards was $100,000?
Yeah, that was with the football, um, goalposts, I'm trying.
Let me, let me look at it right quick. $30,000, so $30,000. So if if you did do that, and you you bought the scoreboards, or the district bought the schoolboards, the schoolboards, scoreboards, that had these panels that these schools could sell for a placement of a company. So what is the criteria of the amount of donation to get their sign on that scoreboard?
That would be something that would have to be set.
I think we need to look into that, spending $30,000 on scoreboards. You know, a company might say, well, I'll just buy the whole scoreboard for the school if I get to put my name on it, like was in the past. And then the school don't have to spend that $30,000. They can put that, like $12,000 for maintenance for athletic fields. And I'm going to have a farming background, and and we all know that $12,000 ain't going to get you much to improve an athletic field. I mean, you'll eat that up in seed alone, less fertilization or anything else. So I would rather have pushed to have corporations purchase the scoreboards, and maybe we could utilize that $30,000 to help get our athletic fields in a condition where they need to be, because some of the fields that I looked at, they're just in poor condition, just because the funding's not there. You see what I'm saying? And and there is actually data out there, and I read up on it, that beautification and landscaping around schools actually helps in school improvement of children and their education. So I'm looking, I'm digging into that. The other thing was, was the bleacher, not the bleachers, that's one of them, let's just go bleachers. So some of the bleachers in the pictures, they are, the wood is, needs to be replaced, okay? So the bleachers, looking on this, on this request here, let's see, let me find it. $100,000 to replace the outdoor bleachers at East and Wesley. And the reason I'm talking about this is because Mr. Allen brought up that PowerPoint presentation. The frames itself are made out of aluminum, or is it made out of steel?
Aluminum.
Aluminum. So aluminum never rust, so I'm going, I'm going to correlate that with the goalpost. So some of the, some of the bleachers that are at these fields don't look very old. They've got aluminum seats, aluminum benches, aluminum frames. But then there's a few of these bleachers that do have the wooden seats with the aluminum frames. My question is, would it be more cost effective, instead of spending $100,000 to tear off the old wood and replace it with treated wood? And you've got another four or five years of life, because the frames won't rust. The second is the goalpost at the schools. The goalpost that I looked at basically needed some TLC. I shook them, they didn't look like it was going to fall out of the ground. And my thing was, when I looked at them, I was like, a good wire, uh, wire brush on a grinder and some fresh paint, and we could save another 30 grand. That could be spent, or not save it, but we could take that additional 30 grand and help beautification of some areas in our other schools. One example is this one we're sitting in right here. The sign out here, when you come into the lower parking area, it needs some attention, just peeling off and stuff like that. The center, the courtyard area up here, and I know it's hard to keep kids from walking on stuff, but bare ground, and I would rather see that money spent to beautify around the schools and maybe help save some money by just replacing boards or something like that. That's the few things that I wanted to talk about on the capital outlay request, because eventually I'd like to see, I ride by the maintenance shop a lot. The maintenance shop has been there since I've been here. And you see that right across the street, they got that new facility for biotechnological or bioengineering or whatever used to be the old carburetor place.
Mr. Gaster, if you don't mind, if you don't mind, I would like to respectfully request that we take this to facilities and technology. You have a lot of wonderful ideas. We have to have this before the county commissioners by the 15th. I do agree, I think it's a wonderful idea. You can have bleachers out there dedicated to a teacher, dedicated to a coach, people can sponsor, all these things that you can, that you discussed before. But in reference to this meeting and this time, we kind of do need to move ahead, but I welcome all that. I think that'd be wonderful to take to facilities and technology, made a bunch of great points that I think we can all look at, and it is something. I watched the shed event, and I'm telling you, they could have went out there and fixed that in one day, you know, so I'm kind of with you on that part. But I don't think we can get that done during this meeting, since we have to present this on the 15th. Is that understood?
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you.
I'd like to comment on just the issues he said while requesting that. So if you've been to San Lee Middle School, the bleachers out there have the safety guard, that's a requirement now. Ours is, we don't have handicapped seating for them, that's why they're suggesting them, why the schools ask for them. The bleachers, you saying about the wooden ones, yes, I've replaced them, I've been here 12 years, we replaced them twice, but they're not stable, they're unsafe. A kid falls off there, then we get a lawsuit on our hands. The goalpost, since I've been here, we painted all of them, we've took a grinder, took a flatbed trailer with a lift grinding. The schools have requested, due to the combination, goalpost soccer post that's at San Lee Middle. It's a lot safer, the teachers, coaches has to move the goalposts for the soccer to the goalpost, and it's not as safe as the ones that's at San Lee Middle. So we're taking in what the schools are requesting for athletics. The 1,200, $12,000, we put it as field maintenance, but it was for rotations of mowers. But some years, once you buy everybody a new mower, we, we changed it to field maintenance so we could use that for some other option. Yes, 12,000 is not going to do nothing for maybe a garden or two, but that's the request from the schools, and that's why we put them in the budget.
Okay, thank you.
We have to take everything to the facilities and stuff, meeting to get approval of what we use our capital, so it can be changed. I mean, we want to use that, and even with the scoreboards in the past, I have had the middle schools call and get sponsorship. Since COVID, it's kind of been hard, because everybody's trying to build up their businesses and stuff, and they're not giving out the money like they used to. So right now, East Lee is in good shape, San Lee is in good shape, and Wesley is the one that's been, everybody else helped them, and they're the ones that's really need school boards right now.
It's great that you asked the question, because that actually go back to policy as well.
Madam Chair, I was also, if I could, one clarification. When we put these requests to the county commissioners, we list these items as priorities and just examples of things that we need within the district, but at the end of the day, with the exception of the special allocation that they would earmark, whatever they give us, they give us in lump sum. And then we can decide, you know what, goalpost turned out not to be the most important, now we need a roof, you know? So it's, it's a little more, when you get off into the weeds like that, we have opportunities once we get funding to allocate it and save every penny we can in different ways. So it is kind of, we're asking for a lump sum, these are just examples of things that we see as potential expenditures.
Like, y'all know about storage tank that I have to replace, I mean, this stuff comes up and we take it out of the capital.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now let's move on.
Do I need to make a motion?
Yes, I'm waiting for your motion.
Yep. So I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the county appropriation requests for the local current expense budget and the capital outlay budget for submission to the Lee County Board of Commissioners, as well as approve the 2022, I'm sorry, 2023, 2024 budget book.
Second. Aye.
Yeah, there you go. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Next order of business, we now have the board policies for second reading. Mr. Gaster?
Madam Chair, what's up for second reading is Policy 4301, student dress code and appearance, Policy 4530, first aid and emergency healthcare, and Policy 8310, the annual independent audit. Policy 4301 and 4530 were, board, just changes in the language. The real thing that got changed in Policy 8310 was actually the language that goes, says here on page three, no, page one, says that all annual audit extensions require full board approval, and the finance officer will provide monthly progress reports in open session at the board's regular meetings until the audit is completed and accepted by the Secretary of Local Government Commission. And then below that, the board members will receive a copy of the report and opinions of the auditor immediately to provide appropriate time review and prepare for any questions before the auditor's presentation. And then the superintendent will arrange for the auditor to present the audited financial statements, compliance reports, if any, and any other information as specified in the audit contract. And the reason we agreed to do that, add that language in there, was because of what we're just continuing, going through now, of not being able, not getting the information in a timely manner, or not getting the information when it needs to be received by the board. So we wanted to add that language in there to make sure it was covered, so the board would be, know what's going on for that. And with that, that's all we have, and so I suggest a motion, the Lee County Board of Education approve Policies 4301, 4530, and 8310 for second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Next, we are having a discussion. I know it's under new business, but the reality is, we're having a discussion. We are not appointing someone to the Central Carolina Community College Trustees Board tonight. We have an appointment that will be vacant, and we, as a board, need to decide on who we would like to put in that position. The Jan Hayes's term expires on June the 30th, and she was appointed jointly by the Board of Education from Chatham, Harnett, and Lee County, but this office actually comes from, this position comes from Lee County. Our appointments at Central Carolina Community College Board of Trustees are very important, and it's in accordance to North Carolina Statute 115D-12, and we must jointly appoint a person each year in coordination with both Chatham, Harnett schools as well, but this is our year. So in other words, who we pick is probably who they are going to support, so I don't want anyone to take this very likely, I mean lightly. So it's my understanding her reappointment is a replacement, and it comes from Lee County, but it must be jointly coordinated, so once we make that decision, we send it to them, and they usually just say, okay. I think it's most appropriate that our board take the applications and resumes from the interested parties to serve in this important position. I think we should actually take about two weeks, and I think I've, I've already spoken with Susan Britt at the board, agrees that we can have it announced at, on, on our website, and if y'all want it in a paper, whatever you want to do, but somehow have a way that we have this out. There's actually a link that they can fill out, the link to be a trustee, they can fill out the paperwork, they can have it, the stuff sent to Susan, and then we'll all have a chance to look at it. We should have, hopefully have a bunch in before the two weeks is up, and you have time to look through them before our next board meeting in June.
Madam Chair, just for point of information at this point, and any future discussion on this matter, because I'm an employee at Central Carolina Community College, and because the trustees oversee the entirety of the college, I would recuse myself from any discussion or appointments to the Board of the CCCC trustees.
Okay. Anyone else?
I suppose I will have to recuse myself too, because I am an employee as an adjunct instructor.
That's all right, we'll make the right decision for everybody. Okay, well, that was the discussion item, so I Well, that was the discussion item, so I actually need someone that would mind making a motion, uh, to have our board clerk, which is Susan Britt, to have these things put up and with two weeks back to us.
Motion to advertise a position for the Board of Trustees at Central Carolina Community College on our website and other social media presence as well. And also to state the, there's qualifications listed in that general statute that has to be followed as well. So those be listed as well for clarification.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. And Eric, now, we're going to close.
Madam Chair, I move that the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session under NCGS 143-318.11A, 1A, 3, and A6 to discuss confidential student information under NCGS 115C-402 to discuss confidential personnel information under NCGS 115C-319 and 115C-321, and to consult with the board's attorney and maintain the attorney-client privilege.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're in closed session.
Lee County Board of Education is back into open session.
Madam Chair, at this time I move that the Lee County Board of Education approve the administrator two-year and four-year contracts, the teacher one-, two-, and four-year contracts, and the human resources report add presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the resignation agreement between the Lee County Board of Education and Andy Bryan, including payment in the amount of $90,000 and six months of continued insurance coverage per the resignation contract terms.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Please add to that, Ms. Britt, if you don't mind, that it is paid for by the local unrestricted funds, GS 115C, 171-d, 271-d. Right. Next.
I make a motion that the Lee County School Board select Dr. Chris Dawsonback as the interim superintendent for Lee County Schools per the contract negotiations that we have made with him.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Congratulations, Dr. Dawsonback.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to authorize H.R. to post the superintendent position and begin receiving applicants.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Finally, the Lee County Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Andy Bryan have mutually agreed to a separation in which Dr. Bryan has submitted his resignation effective May the 9th, 2023, and the Board of Education has accepted it. Dr. Bryan has worked in the Lee County Schools since 2006, and he has served as a superintendent since 2013. The Board thanks Dr. Bryan for his many years of service to the school district and wishes him best in his future endeavors. Dr. Bryan is grateful to the staff, students, parents, and the community for their support of Lee County Schools during his time as superintendent. He is very proud of the many student and staff accomplishments and wishes Lee County Schools the very best in moving forward. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now adjourned. Thank you.